All right, we're gonna call, uh, we're gonna call to order the December eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, uh, regular meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Craig, I'm gonna, oh, here comes Madeline, I'm gonna turn it over to you to, uh, let's discuss the Murfreesboro Airport Terminal.
I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Gerke. Ms. Chad and Gary have worked very, very hard on, on, uh, a new airport design that really has a lot of benefit to the city. Everybody put your cellphones away.
I'm trying to find, see if Ronnie was on his way.
Oh, okay. Uh, so Chad, go ahead.
All right. Mayor and members of the City Council, thank you for letting me come here today. Uh, about a year ago at this time, we were pushing forward a new terminal, uh, but as we continued to work on that project in that building, it was, uh, quickly realized that that was not withholding to our budget at all. And, uh, despite our efforts to try to trim back and, and, uh, change the facilities a little bit to make it fit in budget, there was no way that that was gonna be possible. Uh, I was really concerned that this project may just die there as, uh, planning documents, but, uh, thanks to Gary and the administration and you, you've allowed it to move forward in a, in a new, uh, in a new direction with the design build. Uh, we, we went through that process, started that process this summer, and, uh, once advertised, received, uh, applications from ten different teams of architects and contracts. Really overwhelmed, really pleased with that response. Uh, we had a selection committee put together, whittled that down, reviewed those applications, and, uh, reviewed, got that down to two applicants, uh, which was, uh, Bell Construction and Smith Design Build. Uh, from there, they went before the Public Building Authority where they went into a design competition basically, under the budget of four point five million dollars to provide us a terminal. And in that listing of the information that we gave them, we gave them a listing of all the different offices and spaces and functions and things that we wanted, uh, to see if possible in that building under that budget. And, uh, both firms gave their presentation to the Public Building Authority, and the Public Building Authority selected, uh, Smith Design Build. And, uh, what you see here is a fifteen thousand, two hundred square foot building, uh, single story, there is one, uh, second floor observation area, first floor and second floor observation area, and, uh, and I just hit a few of the other, uh, things there, just one second, so that you can see some of the other design. This is the, uh, land side here, and you can see the observation deck, uh, looking over the area. We hope to see that, uh, there's a lot of children that come and business and people that come to the airport. This will give them an opportunity to see that all that is going on at the airport. Here's some of the, uh, designs of the, uh, sides, front and back of the airport. You can see definitely kind of a aviation feel with the towers, uh, on the side, uh, the middle of the buildings, and then kind of a, on the outside, it's kind of a wing feel or aviation feel to it. And here's the, uh, interior of the lobby. I think you can really see that this is an impressive look, uh, as you come in and out of Murfreesboro. When we were going through our design phase, uh, important part of our initial design, Doug Young spent quite a bit of time on this, and he, he was emphasizing function, budget, but also, uh, uh, something that is impressive to people that come in and out of Murfreesboro, and, uh, really pushed us in that direction. And, uh, I think that this would be pleasing to Doug, I think this is pleasing to everybody. I think you'll see an, uh, an impressive look when you come in and out of these doors. You get a feel for Murfreesboro. Also, we've been talking to the university and that they will have some sort of presence in this terminal, in this lobby as well. If you're telling the story of Murfreesboro, you're telling the story about MTSU as well. While they have a presence out at the airport, this would also be all the other functions that they have going on in this community. We've been working on slight changes on the floor plan to make it work. There's a lot of meeting space, around, uh, two thousand square feet of meeting space in a large area for, uh, not only for events that the airport or businesses out there have, or the university, but we also wanna bring the community in there. There's also a small, uh, conference room in there and a catering kitchen. So this is an area we hope that is very attractive, uh, to businesses that are flying in to do quick business here in Murfreesboro, or the community come in, whatever. Uh, there's also around two thousand, again, feet on the other end of the building just for lease space, and we've got several, uh, interested parties in that as well. Offices for the airport, and then offices and areas for the pilots to come in and get away from the public rest, do their flight planning, things like that. Uh, again, all for the budget of four point five million dollars. There's also a number of improvements on the site for parking, and a lot of neat landscaping things where they're, they're covering the fuel farm area to kinda hide that from the public, bringing sidewalks, connecting it into the sidewalk system, and, uh, allowing for signage and things like that to go all the way out to Memorial, so this is a very uniform look, uh, in the area. What we'd like to do, if you have any questions or anything like that, uh, our goal here today is to get your approval of this concept. Uh, the contracts are being writ, are being worked on right now. We would like to move forward. Time is of the essence with, uh, with, with Smith Design Build to get this going. The schedule is for the existing terminal to be taken down January, February. We could be in this new building by January, February of next year. So really about a one-year process. Uh, he's trying to get all the steel and all that ordered as quickly as possible. So with your approval today, we could move forward with the legal department reviewing the contract and, uh, moving forward with this project.
If I could just jump in, I think, uh, just, uh, direction's really what we're looking for at this point in time. If you have any questions to give you some more information, um, certainly Chad, uh, Gary, or, you know, anyone else can sit down. If you have more detailed questions about what it looks like on the inside and talk to you about that, um, the contracts will, will, uh, bring those forward to council as soon as possible, so as Chad said, we can get started. A couple of things, I think, uh, credits owed to the Airport Commission on all the hard work they've, over a few years now, on, on putting this together, and on the PBA, the Public Building Authority, for, um, assisting us with the project that we could take from nine million to four and a half million and have, uh, a deliverable that we think is a lot more functional actually than the original design they had come in, and also allows us to do quite a bit, um, with that area over there in a brand-new building. It really will start, I think, a lot of improvement at the airport, as Chad mentioned, and, uh, we, there's a few other things we have planned. Um, there's some airport land that fronts on Memorial that we were discussing selling, so that'll help fund some of this, or other improvements on the airport. Um, we'll bring more information about that later. Um, we also have a waiting list of people for hangars at the, who have paid money on a waiting list for, for hangars out there, and so, we do have plans to, um, uh, improve that airport from that standpoint, have more tenants out there and, uh, more activity. So, this is, uh, this is the start of it, it's a big start, and it's a big gateway into the city for our aviation community, so.
So we don't need a motion, or we do need a motion?
Well, I don't think we need a motion now. We, yeah, get direction unless you have any concerns or objections or, uh, anything else. We'll just take direction and move forward. You, you will approve the agreements as, when you see them, and, um, you know, of course, we can dig into plans as much as, as this is necessary.
Well, look, I want, you know, just say that the appropriate time, I think, is now to say how much I appreciate, you know, all the work you and the commission have done, and the other staff members that you've worked with to, you know, go through extra steps to, you know, get the Public Building Authority involved, and all the things that we can do to try to save those kinds of dollars. That's a really big deal, man, so I appreciate it, and I'm gonna go, move forward.
Chad, I, I just wanna say thank you, and, and to Gary for getting involved and, and bringing the building back to within a budget that was, was considered, and, uh, certainly the, the building just exudes MTSU and Murfreesboro's relationship, and with the substantial investment that MTSU has made in their degrees and their aviation and aeronautics that, uh, I think it's only appropriate that, that airport reflects that relationship. And, uh, so, I just wanna say thank you because I think it's a phenomenal facility, and, uh, look forward to riding out there next March and checking it out for the ribbon cutting.
Me too.
Well, it's, uh, it's amazing to me to see, kinda, watch from the sidelines. I didn't have a, didn't contribute a great deal of wisdom or expertise, uh, sitting on the commission, but to watch the folks that really truly understand aviation in Murfreesboro, have expertise in so many different areas, come together and around this terminal project, contribute their, uh, mind, their intelligence, their experience, but as you see in the facility that they're proposing, their heart too. I mean, this just reflects somebody that cares about Murfreesboro, and cares about, and, and went the extra mile. It wasn't just another project for them. The people that would have worked on this project, this was something that they wanted to make, make a statement. And I remember that meeting with Doug, he, that was the word he used, that's, let's have a terminal that makes a statement, when you, when you first come into our community. And, obviously, it took a special group of people with a special heart for this community and a lot of expertise and experience that kinda brought this to the, to this place, and so we're very fortunate to have, uh, have gone through this and seen this. And to see it happen, uh, from the sidelines like I, I was able to, just, just watch, uh, it was, it was really cool to see how this came about, and to see it come to this place where it's such a beautiful facility and, and a really practical facility for our community. I'm very proud of it, I'm glad to see it moving forward.
Chad, Eric, great job. I think one of the things, uh, that's most impressive is, we've been saying all along, we want corporate mem, people to come in, we want them to fly into Murfreesboro. We're looking for corporate business to move here, relocate here, we gotta have a facility. I think we got that now.
Yeah, I think it's great that, we've been talking about it since I've been on the council for a couple of years, and, uh, this is another drawing point, another magnet, so to speak, the reason why we're in the top fourteenth most livable places to live in the United States, when we put amenities up like this. You know, it's just another magnet that we have, and, uh, looking forward to just, uh, viewing a beautiful facility. Thank you so much, everybody that put in the hard work.
I really feel like we had a second breath of life when Gary and the administration went with the design build, uh, and that, and I think you saw the interest from those ten firms that came forward, not only in this building, but I think in that process. And, uh, we took a lot of notes as we went through that process, hoping that, as, as maybe we can apply that to other projects, and that was exciting to be a part of, and, uh, interesting process to be a part of, and, and, and really Gary was, uh, a part of that. I was just, uh, along for the ride and moving forward, trying to keep up with him.
Yeah, this time next year, we'll be talking about going in it.
That's right. Yeah. I already tried to book the Chamber of Commerce for their first event out there, so, just see, just earlier this week.
Wow. Booking ahead, that's good.
All right, before we all have a group Christmas hug, uh, it's so warm and fuzzy in here now.
Is that a motion?
That's right. Let's move to talk about trash now, so.
We're gonna reorder and talk about budget first.
What's that?
CIP first.
Okay.
Do we actually have a collective sidebar?
So, we're gonna, we'll bring it down a little.
All right, so, uh, we're gonna talk about CIP instead.
Yeah, so Erin will take us through, uh, some changes that we're proposing to the two thousand and nineteen CIP and, uh, some of the thinking that we've had behind it, is we've really dug in and done a lot of research on available monies and projects that, uh, provide the most benefit to the city. Go ahead, Erin.
Okay. Uh, I've, as I've settled into my role as Budget Director, I've been, uh, taking the time to meet with department heads and trying to evaluate the projects that we have outstanding on our current bond issues, and these new projects that came up in the September workshop. Um, as we've talked before, we, uh, identified a couple million in unspent bonds, and we also had the twenty eighteen bond premium that we could also use. So, um, excuse me, in the memo that I submitted last week, this, um, the twenty nineteen CIP was originally set for around fifty ti, fifty-nine million, and I think we can drop that down to around fifty-eight million. I have, uh, outlined several additions and, um, decreases in my memo, and I'm happy to talk about any of those changes. Um, I'll highlight the higher level items for you now. So we have around one point four million that we added for a, um, public work, public work south annex to house the street sweeper debris and provide a central location for the city salt supply. We also added around one point three million and, uh, for Fire Station eleven, and also are asking to reallocate five hundred thousand dollars that was originally, uh, scheduled to go on the Fire Station Three reconstruction. We're asking to increase the Doug Young Public Safety Training Facility by one point three million as well, and, um, increase the new Salem School by one point one million. There's an additional, uh, two hundred thousand dollars for design of the gateway extension to Robert Rose Drive, and, uh, five hundred thousand dollars for the design of a new bridge, um, from Rutherford over to Warrior Drive. As far as items that were being removed, we, uh, spoke with engineering, and there are a few items in transportation that can come out. Those include three hundred thousand dollars for, um, Racket Club Drive. Five million dollars for Jones Boulevard has been removed. Um, however, staff has proposed to transfer a million dollars, um, from the twenty eighteen bond premium to fund the first phase for Jones Boulevard to alleviate pedestrian issues there. Um, we're also asking to move from the twenty eighteen bond premium around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Mercury Boulevard sidewalks, and take that out of the twenty nineteen CIP as well. And engineering also identified the Sulphur Springs Connector of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, the connector to Thompson Lane may, may be brought forth in a future CIP, but we don't think we'll need that in twenty nineteen. The other differences are things that y'all already approved, where we're gonna reallocate the previous bond proceeds, and, um, those include, you know, the police marked and unmarked vehicles are gonna be spent out of previous proceeds, as well as some of the ADA renovations, and solid equip, uh, solid waste equipment purchases. So, um, do y'all have any questions about these changes in the projects?
Did we underestimate the, um, cost of the new school?
Not so far. I think, uh, right now, we're, we're holding the budget, and, uh, we're gonna work, continually work very hard to hold that budget. So, if it affects timing, then we'll have to take a, take a look at that too, but right now, we haven't, we haven't heard anything back that we need to fund that any greater than it is. I will say, and Erin alluded to it, she called it the Salem, New Salem School, I think they named it last night.
Salem Elementary.
Salem Elementary, last night, so, uh, it has a name now, uh, and, um, but so far, yeah, we're okay. We're on budget.
What, the Jones Boulevard item, what's happening there? That was, are we, does that mean we're getting rid of the project, or we're just moving to a different year, or what?
Um, both. No, not getting rid of the project. We are moving to another year, but we are putting money into it this, right now, what we have, we feel like we have enough money to do the mitigation for the pedestrian issues on there, so we have, Chris is here somewhere.
Uh, about, how much?
Uh, we've got about three million dollars. Actually, we want to, to focus on the, uh, section from Clark back to, uh, Medical Center Parkway, which were a lot of our pedestrian activity from Mission Nelson Schools back to, uh, back to the Boys and Girls Club. We'll call that Phase One, then Phase Two, uh, which we could do in later days, would be Clark back up to, uh, to Northfield.
So.
About three million for one, I think it's about five million for the other.
So addressing our immediate need for pedestrian access on there is really what we wanted to focus on with this million dollars going into it.
But the five million dollars that we pulled out is from Clark to Jones.
It's from.
The three million is that, is that?
Clark to Northfield, New Northfield.
Clark to Northfield.
Clark to Northfield, there you go.
Exactly.
And, and then, uh, Clark, the Boys and Girls Club, which you're exactly right, is the most severely needed.
Yeah, just looking back, yeah, just looking back at, at some of the pictures that you were giving us and everything, it looked like that was probably.
Right, well, that's, that's, that's the, that's an accident waiting to happen.
Yeah, so we, we wanted to keep that in, and, and just do it, break it up into two phases.
Okay. But, but that phase is on schedule then?
Yes, sir.
And we should see something happen, and some flags going in the ground?
Uh, well, just, MED has gotten us their design, and, and actually, this will actually help accelerate that because it'll reduce quite a bit the amount of easements and road weight we'll have to, have to get.
Right.
MED gave us our design for relocating utilities in there, and once we get that finalized, we'll, 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 we'll find that way in construction.
And Middle Tennessee Boulevard will be finished when?
Uh, shortly, uh.
I told him he'd be.
You were standing up, I thought I'd take advantage of it.
I warned him about, it was gonna be a.
Really just working on some tie-in stuff, go, go Middle Tennessee Boulevard, the paving's done, at least the base is done on both sides, uh, and we'll be, we'll be looking at landscaping during the, over the holidays, I heard, next year, but, uh, that's where the, the main push of what we've got left on Middle Tennessee Boulevard is, uh, some of the hardscape work on the outside, and then the, uh, landscape, roads, essentially, uh, just have, just some of the, uh, streets.
Yeah. It, it's done, but we've still got barrels all the way down it.
It, uh, we, uh, just give them work, you're exactly right, to give them work and ruin that main.
Right.
Exactly. And while we're, projects, lot of streams, substantially completed earlier this month, and, uh, it's open to traffic for the entire ground.
Okay, any questions on the CIP? Thank you, Erin.
Well, there's another aspect to, I'd like to cover too.
Right. Uh, in the past, we've gone, uh, to the public market to issue our debt, and we may still do that this year, but we would also like to explore a bank financing option. Uh, Cumberland Securities, who's been our advisor in the past, would still also help us manage that. Uh, John Warner is here today, if y'all have any questions about that process. Uh, a bank financing option would not tie us in, we can do a request for proposals, see how the rates look, see what the closing costs look like. If it looks like that's something that will, uh, benefit the city in terms of closing costs and all of that, then we can move forward with that. Otherwise, we can still go to the market in early twenty nineteen. If y'all are okay with it, we're gonna go ahead and issue that RFP either today or tomorrow, more than likely.
So it's really exploring another avenue for financing, just to make sure that we're covering off both markets, given the current conditions, if we can get a better rate going by bank finance, it's faster, may give us a little more flexibility, could give us as good or better a rate, but we don't know until we go out and test the waters.
Work on it.
Should slow us down on our issuance, however.
Could be a motion for this.
Uh, no, we're just to get the RFP out, we can do the RFP without a motion.
Yeah, probably will abstain, just in case. I have no idea if that's something that Medical would be involved with, or Raymond James, so I'm gonna.
Yeah, you're right, okay.
But the RFP doesn't necessarily, that, pursuing the RFP option doesn't pre, preclude going back to the market or doing something.
No, no.
It's just to test the water and see what rates are possible.
John, John and his folks have been very helpful in, in us using up their resources to do both, uh, right now, to, to make sure that we're, like I said, we're hitting the market, uh, the most beneficial way that we possibly can.
And that doesn't come back to administration, those RFPs go to them, uh, so, so everyone in the administration is basically pulling strings. It's you guys. That's, that I thought was in your documents, and the RFP's already been written, right?
RFP's been written, it's ready to get, go out the door.
Yeah, it's included in your packet.
Yeah.
And we are still beginning of the fifteen-year payoff.
Right.
I don't see anything.
And the banks are asked not to talk to y'all about the proposals.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you. Melissa? Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Good. Now we can talk trash.
Now let's do it.
Mr. Gore.
Thank you very much. Wish I had a very, uh, quippy way to s, open this, uh, section of the workshop up, but not, not, not really. I will say, from a pragmatic standpoint, um, we are intending and we're on track to, uh, send out a five dollar per month, per cart user fee, January. Uh, extend, uh, great appreciation to Consolidated Utility District for their help in putting the solid waste fee on their, uh, water bill for the Murfreesboro residents, the residential Murfreesboro residents that they serve, and Murfreesboro Water Resources Department. Doug has been integral in, uh, getting that, getting our customer database ready for putting the five dollar per solid waste, uh, five dollar per month, per cart fee on there.
So, just to, to jump in, and a great appreciation's owed to CUD and Bill Danell on, on stepping up and helping us with that. So they've, they've billed, for a long time, our, our stormwater and sewer fees. Uh, adding this in doesn't add a whole lot to it, but it's something they definitely didn't have to do, and it shows a great degree of cooperation with CUD and Mr. Danell. We appreciate that.
Well, if you went to their legislative luncheon, their, their keynote speaker said he never says, "It's not my job." So I reminded him of that, uh, that mantra when, uh, we were asking them to help out, so, they got a kick out of that. Uh, but anyway, so, so that's what we all try to say in the Water Resources Department, and solid waste, and the city now, is it's, you never say, "It's not my job," you step up. So we appreciate that. Um, so we are on a campaign, we're gonna be putting stickers out on all the, uh, carts that give the phone number and the website, uh, for any customer service issues at all, questions about the fee, or quit, or delivery, or, uh, service delivery issues. Uh, we've got an FAQ, this, uh, PowerPoint will be a PDF, but it's gonna be published on the city's website. A frequently asked questions will be published on the website. So we've got a little mock-up of the sticker that's gonna go on there in your packet. So, uh, now we're, and we're gonna be talking about the pro forma and what that fee should be versus five dollars. Five dollars does not recover our current costs due curbside pickup. So, and I wanna, oh, I also wanna acknowledge Jackson Thornton, they have been integral in helping develop this pro forma and this cost of service, or future revenue requirements, I should say. Uh, Jim Marshall and Sarah Chandler are here. Uh, they've, they've been helping me make sure that I caught all of the details. Um, so what are, what are we really covering today in this presentation? And this may not, some folks may not be interested in this part of it, but to whom are we gonna provide this service? Uh, at the last, uh, council meeting back in October, there were several, uh, questions about town homes, cluster home developments, and whether we should be extending curbside service to them. So I'm gonna go through some preliminary, uh, collection design criteria and some of our equipment capabilities. And then the second part is what should we charge for? And so we're gonna review some of the GBB vision documents, uh, that they prepared for us, the GBB being Gershwin, Bratton, and, Brick, Bricken and Bracken, Bratton? I've got, I've got the slide with the right names up there. GBB. Uh, and then we're gonna look at fifteen-year pro forma and, uh, developing a fee schedule to support that pro forma. So, I wanna thank too Joey, Joey Smith, uh, Joey's been, I've got to do some ride-alongs. I will say, you know, I've gone on a couple of ride-alongs, so that makes me an expert now, right, Joey? It's amazing what these guys do every day, picking up, uh, carts. Uh, there's some real gymnastics that they have to go through in order to provide this service, and those, those guys really do take pride in what they do, so we're very, uh, it's a very good workforce and should be proud of them. So we've got twelve side loader vehicles, uh, different, you know, twenty-seven cubic yard, thirty-three cubic yard, one operator, twelve-foot reach, doesn't have a very good turning radius. We've got four, uh, one spare rear loader collection vehicles. These are two operators, so it's not an, is efficient to have two operators. There's safety issues and, um, uh, having someone riding on the back of that, as well as physical, uh, exertion that can, can injure folks because they are having to deal, maneuver these large carts. It has a better, uh, turning radius. We've got the knuckle boom, lemon brush collection, there's eight in the fleet, that are single operator, and four with, uh, two-man operation. Oh, and before I get into, there is on, uh, what I handed out to you today, you do have the PowerPoint, and you've also got some acronyms in the back on that FAQ, if I, if I get the acronyms. GBB's on there, by the way. Uh, so to serve townhomes or not to serve townhomes, that's kinda the question, right? This is an example of where we do not extend, uh, provide service, and that's primarily because of physical constraints. The turning radius does not allow for our, uh, side loader vehicles to make those turns inside. This is off of Dill Lane, and it was, uh, a development that, for a better use, it was, I think there were some trailer parks out there, and now there, there's some townhomes, but they have to have private service, uh, for garbage collection. This is the cloister phase four, we do not serve them, and that's primarily because you can see all of that surface parking. Cars in front could not, the, the, the side loader vehicle cannot extend far through that, uh, parking area to get those carts on the sidewalk. We do provide service here to Bellhaven Cove, but I've got a little, uh, animation here, there's a little design issue that I've been talking with planning about. In order to do this pickup, the garbage truck has to back in to pick up these, these dead-end streets, it actually has to back in, in order to be able to pick up, uh, those three or four units.
How do you do that?
I'm gonna, well, this one is even more impressive. I have stretched my PowerPoint skills to the limit. This is now, the, if you see Joey here in the corner, we do not, I'm calling this a virtual ride along. So we actually had someone with, I guess with the the meeting at the council ask if we would consider a pre-existing townhome development that we would, that is currently using private services, would we consider them to to have city service? And based on the geometry of this, the answer was was really no. But I wanted to show you what it would take if the geometry was right, how we would have to pick up this, these carts in this subdivision or this townhome development. So we're coming along here, I know this is kind of boring, but it does kind of show you the extent to which it's, gotta thank you, only using your right arm.
Oh my goodness.
So. I wish I had Joey's, Joey wanted to put a fight song on here in Alabama. Make it a little more exciting.
Any city should be beeping when it's.
So that, but that that's, that's the route it would take. So you can see in areas like here. And here. And here, these dead ends where you don't, you've got a back end. Again, that's kind of a dangerous situation, these trucks, just having been in them a few times myself. There's, there's a lot of moving parts and and you're having to, you know, use a lot of mirrors and it's just, it's tough to to do it. So I just wanted to kind of give you the the understanding of how difficult it could be if you don't have optimal design in your road layout. So Berkshire subdivision, this is an area that we serve, but there's efficiency issues. We have side loader accessible roads, but guess what, we've got a certain area that's only rear loaders required to come in. That means two trucks in effect having to go to the same area. I would advocate that our rear loader fleet does not need to expand any further and we do not need to pick up townhomes that require a two man operation and a rear loader to make the turning radiuses. So some of the, I I went to Raleigh, North Carolina, you can go, they've got a, they've got a solid waste collection design guide and I have borrowed several of their slides or their criteria and I just wanted to give you some some general design criteria on when we should pick up. Think alleys need to be, and I'm working with planning, working with Sam and Donald on this, but eighteen foot minimum alleys, thirty foot radius, right now on the on the alleys, we don't have a proper radius to make the turns. We tear up a lot of landscaping, a lot of corners of yards because we don't have the proper radiuses on the alleys. Alleys need to be straight through, they need to go from public street to public street, we don't need acute angles or ninety degree turns. And so real simply, what I'm saying is that if any of these items are not, are detached, single family dwellings would not be served if the following occurs. They have surface parking in front of the units, that would disqualify them. If the geometric design of the streets or alleys does not meet our engineering department standards, they would not qualify. If they have private streets or alleys, they still have to meet the geometric design and they gotta meet the right paving schedule. If there's any other obstacles in the way for the for the for the twelve foot extension of our side loaders to reach the cart, they would be disqualified. And in essence, if you've got attached dwellings with six units that have a common entrance or they're a vertical construction, i.e. if it's more of a condo condominium complex, they would, in multiple stories, they would just be disqualified. Now, these are just suggestions and I'll, we're not asking for action today, this is where we're headed. These are some things to consider, Raleigh allows this, they have joint residential cart enclosures. If people, if you don't have access to to the townhomes, they do allow cart enclosures. Now, I've talked with Joey, we need three foot separation between carts. So however these cart enclosures would be designed, we would still need the carts to have enough separation that that arm could come in and get them. But it's a potential, and again, on the top row up here in this area, if you have, they don't have access, they don't have front entry garages or they don't have access, if you have enough breaks to allow people to pull them from behind the units to the front street. Again, that's something to consider if we really want to pick up those those carts and those type of developments. So again, this is no action today, but we wanted to give, do this with the Water Resource Board a lot. Telling you where we're headed. These are the ideas and we wanna do, we do wanna develop some solid waste collection design criteria to insulate Joey, to insulate myself, to insulate staff on as to when we pick up and when we don't. If you meet these criteria, you get picked up, if you don't, you don't. And it really doesn't become, it becomes a very objective basis on when we do it. Uh, so we're gonna be bringing those back to you. If you don't, if you have ideas or you don't like some of the things I've brought up, this is the, you know, not necessarily now, but just give me a call and we can talk through it. This is the direction we're headed. Now.
Darren, just quickly, I mean, one other resource, I mean, I think I've always had the understanding that, you know, knowing what the rules are is a good thing on the front end, you know, the developers who are gonna be the ones doing this, the engineers are gonna be dealing with this, might be a good idea to use them as a resource, get some ideas, make sure we run that. About them, get a little feedback or whatever, because they know better than I anyway, so.
Sure, yeah, I.
But that, I mean, it looks good, I'm just gonna say.
Yeah, oh absolutely.
I feel also while we're thinking about this.
I think whenever it's it's best practice or our standard practice, when we try to implement any new design criteria or any new policies or procedures, we always conduct stakeholder meetings. So we'll have developers, engineers, we'll have everybody in here to get to review it before before anything is finalized. Before it gets back to you all, yeah, absolutely.
And there, Darren's group is working with Development Services to make sure that, you know, because they are the ones that develop and have to deal with the plans that come in, so it's, this is a joint effort to make sure that that's covered.
And right now, based on if we go with the new criteria, do you have a roughly a percentage of people that will not still qualify even if we adopt the new one?
No, no ma'am, I don't. I haven't, I haven't gotten it, well, we haven't finalized the design criteria, so I haven't gone through and really tried to assess pre-existing developments to see if they were, they they met those criteria or not. And really, I probably wouldn't do that until we have a final set of design criteria, then we would go through. But I think if that would be a good companion, some data for you all is to say if we do accept this design criteria, these particular developments would be in, these would not, so we can have that available for you when we come back.
But right now, the percentage is kind of below thirty.
I would think most townhome developments would not meet the criteria, it would be low that the ones that would meet the criteria, right? Just because, as you see, when you maximize the number of units, you create a lot of these dead ends. And in order to do the, to meet the design criteria, you're gonna have to have the geometry, we're not gonna be doing a lot of backing in or so forth. It's gonna have to, and that may, that may lose units. For you to design it properly, you may not be able to get into, you may lose two or three units that you would create a little stub road for if 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 you weren't required to to meet our criteria. Okay, I'll proceed now to the fun stuff. A basic service delivery tenant, so I just wanted to start out here and say, right now, for every townhome or cluster home that we that we pick up, it costs us money, because we're not recovering our costs, right? So it is therefore not beneficial at this time to pick up any townhomes or cluster homes. When an adequate fee is developed for the city to cover its costs, then it is advantageous to pick up townhomes and cluster homes, right? It's just, we're not recovering our costs and until we do, it's not a good thing to pick up more garbage. So that's what this pro forma is for. When do we, when does that happen, when do we get a fee that properly covers our costs? So first off, this is the G B B vision document, it was draft sent to us in August of this year. This is a basis for a lot of my numbers. This was a joint venture with the city and Rutherford County. I don't think this ever got finalized, but we got the draft in August and I don't know if it ever will be finalized based on the the, if the consulting services of G B B are no longer going to be employed. But they did give us a pretty good document as a go by. So first off, I just want a couple, we talk about transfer stations a lot. This is what a transfer station is, you have an over the road truck with an open top and you dump garbage in the back of it, it's in a candy lever situation. You can get a mechanized refuse transfer, transfer station, I'm told that's not the best way to go, just do a direct transfer is the best way. G B B's document has that program to be, to to happen in twenty twenty four. That's when we are saying that the Middle Point landfill will be closed. A mixed waste processing facility is proposed in twenty thirty, this is commonly referred to as dirty recycling. You go through, there's no sorting of of recycling materials, all of the solid waste is taken to this processing facility. It is mechanized, there's a mechanized sorting equipment that you do generate refuse derived fuel, this R D F. So there is a commodity that comes out of it, it's in essence a brick that you burn, a coal substitute. So this is, this is again, I'm just going, this isn't Darren Gore's grand idea, this is the vision document that I think we all spent some some money on. So right now, what I'm just going through some preliminary numbers, I have about five million dollars in F Y twenty that I believe it would cost for the annual operating budget for the solid waste, Murfreesboro Solid Waste Department. That doesn't include eight hundred fifty thousand that I think probably should be programmed in there for equipment replacement cost, i.e. depreciation. Rutherford County, their F Y nineteen annual operating budget was about five point four million. In twenty twenty four, you can see a one point seven and a three point six million dollar transfer station are proposed with a annual operating cost of seventeen point two million. That's in addition to the five, the ten point four million that are currently being expended. In twenty thirty, we're showing a twenty two million dollar mixed waste processing facility being constructed. Yes.
Is it the operating cost on the left actually? Is it seventeen million in capital cost?
No, it's only five point three million in capital cost for the transfer stations and it's seventeen point two million annual operating cost. And I'll tell you, that's because you're hauling the the garbage to, it's a two hundred and twenty five mile round trip and you are, you're hauling it, it's two and a half dollars per mile.
I was just total, I was just totaling the one point seven and the three point six.
Yeah, that's five point, five point three million is the capital cost. These, these transfer stations are pre-manufactured metal buildings, it's concrete slab with a roof over it.
Gotcha.
That you can dump the garbage in and it's, they're pretty cheap, if you, this assumes no land cost though.
So I think that's important, because we were talking about this on W G N S this morning, that right now, our operating budget is roughly five point one million dollars to pick up forty six thousand households, I think that's, is that right Joey? Forty six thousand households. In in five years, that number is anticipated, based on our study, to over quadruple what we're paying now plus, not or not including capital expenditures.
Right. The debt service is is pretty small compared to the operating expenses though, the, I mean, five point three million in debt service is not not huge. But now, the, I do have some recurring vehicle replacement costs though, that that depreciation does add up.
The the point I'm making on that, where, you know, there's a, there's a segment that we constantly talk with about, you know, what the future of this is gonna be, but if you put that into relation to our budget, you know, our budget this year is, rough numbers a hundred and seventy million dollars and we're paying right now five million for for pickup. So that's about three percent of our total budget is directed to solid waste. In five years, we're looking at over fifteen percent of our budget now goes to solid waste. So that number goes up six times. So when we're talking about how do we pay for solid waste, that's one of the things that we've been wrestling with is you can't do that through our existing budget, there's no way to do that.
One of the, the main, right, so so one of the main reasons we're talking about this is we know, we've had a great, great advantage in the fact that the city has had no tipping fees and the county has paid no tipping fees to the Middle Point landfill. Those days are over. That it's not, we are going to have to start paying and we're gonna have to start hauling. To have it right here, and so so a lot of this is the cost associated with the sweetheart deal that we've had for the past twenty five years, it's going away. And and you're right, the reason we were able to fund it under the the general tax revenue, the general funds tax, tax revenue is the fact that we've had a sweetheart deal. We weren't, we we really were just paying for the cost to collect it and take it to the Middle Point, to landfill, but we were not paying any actual fees to dump it there, it was free of charge. So this is preparing to get it into what I've always said is the most, it's the most equitable form is to treat it like a utility and charge a user fee. Right now, there are commercial and industrial property taxes that are subsidizing the service. And it's a residential based service, the residences are the ones that, and so really, when you look at cost of service and and your customer base, the people that utilize the service should be charged the service. You you wanna avoid the subsidization issues, so that's, that's another reason why we're moving towards a utility user fee. This is, population is the line with the numbers above it, but the the solid, the tons of solid waste are the bars. We're anticipating three hundred and forty eight thousand tons of municipal solid waste processed in two thousand and twenty four in Rutherford County. Yes, sir.
I'm assuming when we're talking about carrying the trash and dumping, we're looking at what Camden now and perhaps Huntsville?
Camp, Camden and Huntsville are the two, they're both about a hundred and ten miles away. Yes, sir, so Camden is where I've, I'm looking at.
Are those locations aware of what's about to happen? Because it's not just our trash, but it's Davidson County's trash and all the surrounding communities that have put in the Middle Point. Are they aware about what's going to happen with their situation and have they made financials?
Well, Joey.
To us to know some idea of what it's gonna cost us to tip and put the stuff in there? Or are we just calculating off today's number?
Well, I've got, I've done a sensitivity analysis at the very end to show what increased tipping fees, increased mileage, increased hauling cost, how that affects the numbers. So I've got, I've, I'm kind of, I'll give you kind of a, like I said, a sensitivity analysis to those, to those elements or to those variables. But I know there's a regional solid waste commission or regional solid waste user group that meets routinely, kind of like the transportation group that meets routinely for the, for, it looks at these regional. So I'd ask Joey or Mac, are these, is everybody aware of the, they, I would assume. A nineteen county group of coalition. And they're all aware, they're all aware that Middle Point's closing. So of that three hundred and forty eight thousand, it is anticipated that Murfreesboro is thirteen percent of that or forty five thousand tons in twenty twenty four. This is just, Joey has been tracking the municipal solid waste tonnage generated, that's the solid blue line and I've just kind of extrapolated that out to twenty thirty three. The red line is the population, kind, so you can kind of see how that tracks. The projections line up, they're saying forty four, the the extrapolation shows forty four thousand tons. I, for the, for the purpose of this pro forma, I've got forty eight thousand tons, which is about fourteen percent, just to be a little more conservative. I think we historically underestimate, so just trying to be a little conservative on the tonnage that we're gonna generate here. So going, talking right now really about who will plan and lead this. Rutherford County government through interlocal, there's an opportunity for Rutherford County through interlocal agreements or developing. Rutherford County government through interlocal, there's an opportunity for Rutherford County through interlocal agreements or developing a county solid waste authority or materials management authority. Or will Murfreesboro go solo? Right? So for the purposes of this pro forma, I've done it both ways. If a county authority is developed and Murfreesboro is a customer to that county authority, what does that look like? And then if we had to do it ourselves, not partnering with the county, what would that look like? Okay, so two scenarios. And this is the second one. We would build our own transfer station and fund all of our hauling and needs to an alternate landfill. So this is if we were an RCMMA, Rutherford County Materials Management Authority. Debt and capital expenditures, transfer station costs, that's from 2024 to 2033. This authority would need to be up and running and have those facilities in place by, by year 2024. When you build the mixed waste processing facility, that adds debt. And then you've got 80%, 7% of the operating costs are that. This is a little deceiving because at that mixed waste processing facility, you see those expenses go way up. You have to remember 28 million in operating expenses, but you are making 10 million. The assumption is you're making 10 million a year in the commodity of selling that RDF, that refuse derived fuel. So all things considered equal, it's about, it's just a little bit more than what you would be paying if you just were hauling it away. And so you're creating some beneficial reuse product with the mixed waste processing facility. This is where flow control comes in. I didn't know about this until just a month or so ago. Flow control are legal provisions where the county can say that every bit of of municipal solid waste or recyclable material, they can in essence create a monopoly and designate where that, that trash goes. So they can control everything in the county and say, we want all that 348,000 tons to our facilities. If that happens, all, all 348,000 tons, that, that Rutherford County Municipal, I mean Materials Management Authority, I'm trying to get tongue tied here. They would have to charge about 53 and a half dollars per ton in 2024. And it actually goes down a little bit in 2030 when the, because you are making that, that commodity revenue about $50.50. I had to come in and back into that number. Now I can say, okay, if we're a customer paying those tipping fees to the authority, what does it cost us? So we're at 48, 48,000 tons. So if you take this blue and this orange and you kind of look at the next slide, you'll see that's going to cost about 25% of our operating costs in that timeframe. The collection payroll, collection services and the capital equipment cost make up the other. Okay? This is what the annual budget would look like. You can see the big jump when the landfill closes from 6.8 to 9.6. And then again, as it goes out to 2033. To support that type of, of expense, what does the fee structure have to look like? Okay, this is the money slide. Five dollars, six, eight, 11, 14, 17, 19, 20. And then we can level off around $21 in, in year 2026. So that's about almost $3,000 in a 15 year timeframe. Keep in mind, $12 per month is about what we would need to cover our current costs. So it takes us a few years to get to that $12 per, per really four, four and a half, five years. Now, so this is what the, this is the annual surplus deficit. You can see that the blue line is what we would operate on an annual basis. This assumes we get into a fund balance. If we do follow the fund balance, if we are saying the solid waste starting next year or January 1, we are going to start generating our own fund balance. It would take us 15 years to get, to get into a positive fund balance position. Okay, what if we go solo? This is scenario number two. Payroll, O and M, capital equipment. Now we've got our own hauling costs. Now we've got our own tipping fees and we do have some debt service. So if you add that 12, the top three bars there, that's 30%. So it does increase the cost because we're having to carry the debt now and we are also having to, to fund the hauling and the disposal of an alternate landfill. This is the red line, the red bar compared to the previous if we were a solid wa, if we were a customer of a materials management authority versus if solo. So this is about a 17 to 18% more expensive option between 2024 and 2030. What does that fee have to look like? Well, you can see in the blue line, the blue dash line, that's about 33, so it's about $400 more. I was a little bit surprised in the fact it doesn't really, I mean, it's another dollar a month. It's another couple of bucks a month and certain, it's not, it's not doesn't double your fee, let's say. But I still think the, the authority option is the best option. And these are the costs for the city. This doesn't include any county costs that may be through property taxes. If the county needs to fund their operations through property taxes, you know, that's going to be a little bit of a double, a double dip, I guess, on Murfreesboro residents. I mean, the authority also lends itself to being a user fee and a utility. And we're a customer as a user fee utility and then you don't have any of that doubling up, let's say. This is what that looks like. Same kind of scenario. We get into a positive annual operating position for a few years. It closes, we go negative and we get positive again in about 15 years fund balance. Now, this is the sensitivity analysis I was saying. I've got a 225 mile, 275 mile, 325 mile haul, a 40, 50, 60 dollar tipping fee per ton. And these are just, these are just thumb, you know, I plugged these numbers in and saw how the numbers changed. For every 50 miles additional haul at the, at the two and a half dollars per mile, that increases cost about 2%. If you, if that two and a half dollars per mile goes to say to $3, every 50 cents extra hauling cost per mile, that's another 2%. And for every additional $10 per ton tipping fee, that increases the cost by 3%. So the great thing about a pro form is we look at it and we update it and as things change, we change the numbers and so we've got the model built now and we can adjust as we need it. This is, this is the first one out of the gate and the first pro forma out of the gate is always the, the least refined. Let's put it that way. Now somebody asked me, said, well, Aaron, why wouldn't we just go to the $12 as soon as possible and get into a positive net position annually and get the fund balance up within five years? I said, well, I don't know. Maybe we could. That's maybe a decision that the council would like to see.
Change your home addresses.
So I ended up, I ended up doing this this morning, couldn't help myself. And you can see this gets us into a pretty good operating position each year and it gets the fund balance up pretty, you know, pretty big, over 8 million in 15 years, but we get into a positive condition in about five. That's what this looks like. You go five, 12, 15, 17 to 20. Now that's, that's if we, I did this under the Murfreesboro operating solo. You know, you take 17, 18% off if there's a Rutherford County authority that's developed. But I wanted to just let you all know, it's about a $600 difference over 15 years. It's about $3.30 a month. If you averaged it out. But that's what it looks like if we wanted to get into a, a more aggressive fee to fund the solid waste services.
Hey Darren.
Yes.
Before we get off this authority idea, just a couple of things and these, this may be maybe a different discussion, but I mean, is there, is the authority confined to just our county? So, or can it be, I mean, is there an authority that can be multiple counties or what?
That's a good question. I don't know. Could we have multiple counties in an authority, Joey? Mac?
Yeah, Nashville's going through, I think, a very similar study than, as a matter of fact, we had our, our mayor's caucus meeting Wednesday of last week and this was a topic of discussion with Williamson County, all of our surrounding areas. It was something that was the second priority that everyone wanted to talk about this upcoming year is how all the counties and municipalities could possibly partner together to do exactly that.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going with that. The, the other thing about that though is, and even if it's just within our county, okay, so using your assumptions here that we're just talking about Smyrna, Laverne, you know, Eagleville, unincorporated, whatever.
Right.
Would it be important for all of the, I guess you, maybe you call it the parties to, to charge for this service in the same manner? For example, if Smyrna puts it in as a property tax increase and the county puts it as a property tax and Laverne does a fee for use and we do a fee for use, it's got case particularly between the counties who, us as city residents also pay county taxes.
Right.
Seems like that we would all need to agree on the billing mechanism.
Right.
As well as the, all the other.
In the, in the vision document that GBB prepared, they talked about Gwinnett County and they created zones in the county so that people could bid on a particular collection zone. Cause right now Smyrna and Laverne and Eagleville, they don't have curbside collection. But you could say, we're going to put Smyrna, I don't know, chop Smyrna up into two zones and Laverne's one zone. And you put that out for bid. The authority could put that out for bid and then Republic, Waste Management, maybe those are the only two. Other, other, other curbside providers could come in and bid on that and the authority would award their, that zone to that private hauler. And so the city, Smyrna and Laverne still are out of the solid waste business. But those folks are, you know, the Republic and Waste Management are charging their, their customers a certain monthly fee and they're taking it to the authority who is charging them on the per ton basis that they, that they, they dump.
You see what I'm talking about though is if, if Rutherford County, for example, decides to raise their property taxes.
Right.
In order to cover their costs.
Right.
Then they would have raised property taxes on the people who live in those two zones in Smyrna.
Right.
Who aren't getting the usage of it is what I, and so it just seems like we need to make sure that that's all part of the equation too.
Yes.
It almost raises the question.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, it's. It, it almost raises the question, should the city even be in anything other than the trash pickup and getting it to the, the center?
That's what I, that's what I, that's when I say, when we are a customer of an authority, the authority would be charging their fees at their facility. And they would have divvied out, Murfreesboro would still cover our costs through a utility fee like we're a private hauler, just like a Republic or Waste Management. The, and then we pay a portion of that to the authority because they're the ones tipping it into a haul, a, a, an over the road truck to take it to another landfill or if it's a mixed waste processing facility. But yes, I would advocate and I think working with the county, that the county, really it's not the best solution to fund it through a property tax. They should look at an authority and charge a utility fee or a tipping fee or have the facilities to accept it and, and to take it wherever that we need to take it.
That's exactly right because otherwise it's just a double tax on the city and citizens of Murfreesboro.
Right.
They're going to pay for it on the front side with the pickup fee.
Right.
And then we're going to get a property tax increase. So we're going to pay more than our fair share to take care of this situation.
And, and I should note, I've, I've talked with Mike Kush, I've talked with Mayor Kethren, we've talked with Mac Nolan, we, we this needs to be, one of the things I pride myself in is when things are on center and static, we need to move. We need to make, part of this, part of this profile, I appreciate the county being here is that we need, we need to start moving in, in the direction and having those conversations. So a large part of this presentation wants to provide you information is to get us off center and start moving in the, in, in the direction where we're, we're talking authority. And how do we, how do we, how do we create that?
Eddie, we, we've, this has been, you know, five years almost to get to this point.
Yeah.
And then we, we had our last solid waste meeting back mid-year. It was at the, at the county courthouse or the, the where the commission meets, the Rutherford County courthouse.
Yeah.
So the, we went through all of these different things and, you know, GBB really came back and felt like pursuing Middle Point was a, Middle Point 2.0. And, and I think several of us on the solid waste commission and several commissioners, I think, made a good decision that we just said, well, whoa, you know, let's look at what other options are because we're going to be back in the same place. It may be 10 years from now, but we're going to be right back here again. So the, the solid waste committee did say that they, they felt like that, unless I'm missing something Kurt, you were, you were there, that they felt like pursuing a solid waste authority would be something that would be beneficial. Cause what it ends up doing, it really just looks at it's like a water and sewer board or CUD. It's sort of black and white. Here's what the service costs. Here's what it costs to provide it. Here's how much it is. And it doesn't get into the political part of, you know, raising property taxes for trash service. Cause that is the one thing we keep saying this, you know, 51 or 52% of our total property tax revenue comes from commercial businesses. And those commercial businesses, except for a few exceptions downtown and
Right.
they don't pay, they don't get trash service. I mean, it's all paid privately. So, you know, when we raise property taxes on commercial businesses for trash service, then that ultimately is, if, if a landlord is charging more to a tenant, that's just getting passed back to the end user. So regardless of whether we raise it on the commercial business, consumers or retailers, we're going to end up paying for it one way or another. So I think that's why we just said, here's the way it, it should go.
I, I, I agree with everything you're saying Shane, but at the end of the day, we need to make sure that the city isn't getting dumped with the bulk of the load. And it can't be done through property tax because if you do it through property tax, we're going to be, well, we'll be like we are with hotel motel tax and the city of the county fire department being funded by it. Well, the city taxpayers already pay for their fire service.
Yeah.
And yet we're collecting taxes inside the city to help pay for services outside the city.
Yeah, and I think that's where everyone on the, on the solid waste, the committee really just said it, it does not need to be done through property tax. It's going to have to be done through
User fee.
User fee. And that's where we.
And tonnage or whatever.
Taxes never, yeah.
Taxes was never brought up during the meeting.
Good.
It really got from there more into talking about incentivizing recycling, you know, so from there, like with Mr. Baines over there, I guarantee you his trash load is a lot less than my trash load with, with three kids and, you know, it's just, so we've got to find a way to incentivize those who recycle. And right now, there's just, there's an incentive for doing the right thing for the environment, but there's not an incentive to recycle. And so we've got to be able to get that financial incentive to people to be able to, to recycle.
And you would say that some people may say, well, well, most people I've talked to recently that, that I say, you've got private pickup service. How much are you paying for private pickup service? Most of them say 27 to $34 seems to be the number that everybody's hitting. So this number's really not surprising as to what it would cost for a monthly service. But yeah, and that's 10 years from now that we get to that number. But the assumption is, is that their number would stay the same and they can't carry it to Middle Point anymore either. So their number of hauling it.
Every.
X number away is going, you know, 120 miles, whatever, one way. That number is going to go up substantially as well. So it's not a competitive situation that you would say, well, we're competing with the private sector because it's not going to be competitive.
They, every private, every private provider right now should have this same type of pro forma in front of them. They should see the same kind of increased cost. If their, their curbside collection services are 75% of their fixed costs and all of a sudden they're going to have a 25% increase in their costs because of having to haul it somewhere else.
They're paying tipping fees already, but the transportation.
Right, the transportation costs are going to be, right. They're going to, they're going to have to haul it to where a, a much longer distance. So they're, 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 they're fixed expenses are going to go up too.
And, and that's the other part, you know, I think we've had phenomenal relationship over the last three or four years working with, you know, what was Mayor Burgess, working with the county and Mac and Joey have worked together and you know, this is a problem. It's not just a Murfreesboro problem. This is going to be a Rutherford County and a regional problem. But, you know, as a municipality, in, I've talked to, to Mayor Reed quite a bit. You know, if you're not picking up trash right now as a municipality, why in the world would you want to pick up trash right now? I mean, there's, you know, you're just bringing on a problem and you're bringing on extra money that you're not having to pay right now. So I think it's beneficial that, you know, Murfreesboro is the only municipality that's picking up trash right now. Rutherford County operating the convenience centers. picking up trash right now, Rutherford County operating the convenience centers, picking up all the schools and doing all the work that they're doing. It's beneficial that we've gotta get, um, an overall plan to get Laverne, Smyrna, Eagleville, that everyone has gotta come on board. Cause, you know, four or five years from now, that's really the only model that it makes that works. I mean, if we all go alone, there's no efficiency to be able to do it. So that's what we've gotta, and I appreciate you getting us off center because we have been, I would probably tell you, we've been further off center the wrong way, just not, not doing much. So this gets us a point to where we can push and move through.
Right, so we wanna build momentum and I would say to Smyrna and Laverne, they don't have to get into the garbage business and they don't have to charge their people fees. They have to afford the authority to come in and create zones in their area and, and how they would be most efficiently picked up. But the city really wouldn't necessarily be in the, it would be the authority's business to take care of those cities through private collection services. But I do wanna, I don't, this was a, this is a, you know, this is an elephant that I'm, you know, kinda trying to say, hey, let's, let's eat this in one bite. I know a lot of us have been on, in, in the thought process of this in a lot longer than maybe even myself. I've just really, I've been, I've been trying to drink out of a fire hose here lately myself. But, uh, curbside recycling is a different business model. I kinda wanna end on that. This is a next, this is, this is something I know that everybody's interested in. And so this pro forma didn't get into curbside recycling, that's a whole, I've read, I've read a lot on recycling and I can tell you right now, with the whole situation with China, it has created a very volatile market, a lot of places going out of business, a lot of places not charging enough based on the fact that China's no longer taking the bulk of the world's recyclables. I know that Thailand and some of those other far east areas are trying to gear up to take it, but contamination is a huge issue. Our society, our throwaway culture, we don't think about contamination much, well, contamination is a big, big issue. And, and so also we are looking at those emerging technologies and I've talked with Mayor Kethrin and I know he's got some very innovative thoughts and ideas about how the county can, can most beneficially utilize our solid waste, our municipal solid waste. Those aren't off the table. Again, just because of, what I presented to you today was the sure thing, you take the garbage, you haul it to another landfill. That's not as, you know, there's, there's a lack, there's not, that's not the most sustainable model, although some would say the cheapest thing to do in middle Tennessee is to keep burying it. It's just where are you gonna put, take it? You know, there's, there's not a lot of folks interested in a landfill in their backyard. So, uh, we're gonna keep, keep investigating those emerging technologies and try to come up with innovations and recycling is gonna be part of that discussion. I just would, that's maybe another workshop down the road where we can talk about recycling.
And perhaps with the ability to separate the glass out, to separate the steel out, to go to the composting situation, maybe some type of a burn system, pelletizing solid waste and using it as fertilizer, that the overall amount could be reduced.
Right. Yeah, well, the water resources.
That sounds good, but population is a sole factor in this.
Right.
And if we continue to have population growth that's projected.
All of this does, it does include, you know, population growth as, and, and again, we, if you were at our Water Resource Integration Plan joint meeting we had with CUD, we have historically underestimated our population growth. So, uh, every estimate going back into the seventies has underestimated our growth. So I hope we're not underestimating our growth here or our garbage generation. Again, now that we've got the model, we will continue to look for innovative technologies and we will update as, as new data is presented and we'll plug that into the model and this may be a, every other year. But I think the, the biggest thing right now is to engage the county, talk about the authority. We really need to get these transfer stations, somebody's needs, I mean, Middle Point is coming, coming to an end. I mean, that's the reality we're facing. We need to have a transfer station to take the garbage to. Somebody's gotta carry that debt, somebody's gotta fund it. I would advocate that authority be the best venue to do that, pull that off and that we're their customer. But that's gotta be something that the county buys into as well. And we're talking, we're continuing to talk.
Darren, I want to thank you for all this. This is, I was just telling Councilmember Lance, you know, Kurt and I sat on this Solid Waste Commission, you know, going on three years and I appreciate the work that's been done, but this has probably been as informative as anything that have, we've gotten in some time because this actually puts the rubber over the road on understanding, you know, everyone hears us talk about how expensive this is gonna be, but I, I, I think to some extent, people think that we're trying to have a money grab to get money into the general fund when that's not the case. I mean, this is gonna be something that's gonna affect county residents who go and drop off, um, at the convenience centers, they're now gonna have to pay when they go to convenience centers. I mean, so this is something that's just.
Right.
It's a big deal.
It is.
And it's not something that's tangible that you're really gonna see, but I still argue and would say, even at $5 a month right now, for somebody to come to my house, pick up my two trash cans for a dollar and a quarter a week, that's a pretty good deal, um, to, to be able to do that right now.
Yeah. And, and I would just say, the, the, the question in front of the council needs to be really, you know, we're looking at about a four to five year timeframe to get it to that $12. And right when we start to over-recover our expenses, landfill's gonna close shortly thereafter. How aggressive do we wanna be on the, on the fee? Cause I do have, as, as you've noticed, July 1, I've got it going up to $6 or $7.
I, I think if you would, speaking, if you would come back during budget, you know, one of the things that you did several years ago when we were, we still had monthly minimums on our, our water that we weren't charging for.
Right.
You know, people got, I forget how many gallons.
Allowance.
Yeah, they had an allowance. And you really came up with a, with a pro forma that showed us, look, over five years, this is what, this is gonna, we're reducing it from here to here to here. So if you could come back during budget and give us what you feel like is realistic that we need to see.
Okay.
Then we can, as a council, vote on that and really be able to put that out to everyone so it's completely transparent and say, here's what it's gonna be over the next five years.
It's, it's gonna be very close to what I gave you today.
Okay.
And that's, that's based on some assumptions, right?
It is.
We can't, we can't get it to a, to an exact spot because we don't know what the solution's gonna be yet.
Right.
If authority becomes a multi-county's authority.
Right.
It might change the number.
Right.
I, I think, you know, look, I, here's another way of looking at this, I, and I want you to just, tell me if I'm off base, but I'm trying to think through this and listen to everybody at the same time, but is, you know, the, is the alternative, so, you know, if we get those numbers, right, they come back and we see these numbers and we kinda have to make a decision, somehow or another, we gotta get the $12 a can in the next five years or what ish, okay?
Right, right.
To make this thing to where it's a, a net, net deal. Is the alternative, we just say, well, we're just not gonna pick up trash anymore. We're gonna sell our trucks, we're gonna, you know, get rid of that stuff, we're not gonna pick up your brush, we're not gonna pick up your trash, we're out of that business and then it's just all privatized? Is that the alternative?
Yeah.
I mean, we either pay for it.
Yeah.
We pay for it either by collection or by property taxes, right?
Right.
Which I don't think anybody wants, that thinks that's the right thing to do for multiple reasons. So we either collect it or we get rid of it.
Right.
Is that right?
That's right, that's right. Or you.
I think it's important.
Sort of. In an urban environment, it really, it really isn't. I mean, it's, it's kinda like a sewer service or, or some other kinda services along those lines is, you know, you, there's always an alternative. I mean, you cannot do that, but it, it doesn't work in an urban environment because it affects everybody else. So if you, if, if we left it.
The risks are there's a bunch of trash in the streets.
That's the risk. There's a bunch of, or they're dump, or they're dumping it somewhere else or it's piling up in the backyard before they get to convenience center or there's lots of other things that really make it an unpleasant alternative. So it is a, it's an alternative, it's not real viable.
Here's, here's the thing, you know, I, I, I just, I mean, look, I, I get that there are some people that just get kinda, you know, are gonna obviously question and, and which questioning is perfectly fine, I think, you know, but to listen through this and to think that there's some argument for, you know, well, we just shouldn't either raise taxes or we shouldn't be charging the $5 fee, I mean, you know, or we just, either that or just don't pick it up. I mean, I, I think, I think a town with 130 or 40,000 people in it or whatever, I mean, you know, you better be careful about what you ask for if you're, if you're asking to privatize this thing, you know, because $5 a month is a heck of a good deal. And if you start privatizing and let everybody be their choice on what they do with their trash, I think we're gonna be going back to some 55 gallon drums, you know, backyard kinda.
Although, you know.
Enforcement is a.
But there is an aspect of privatization, I mean, you can require that there be a fee assessed and then require that the service be paid for and then privatize out the actual service of that, you know? So, so there can be a privatization component for it, but it still has to be that this is a utility that you have to have is in an urban environment, you have to pay for that utility, just like you have to pay for water and sewer. You can't have a house and not have those things hooked up in the city. It doesn't work that way. And this is really a utility.
I think something that'd be beneficial and maybe work with Mr. Browning, I, I, if you could condense this, you know, I don't think showing the, the town home pickup side and side, but I think if you went through and we put some of the, this out on our website, we need to push this out in social media, part of this whole deal is gonna be education.
Right.
I think if you were a rational individual, just like what Rick is saying, and you sit here and you go through all of this information and say, okay, the cost is gonna go from $5 million to $22 million in five years, um, how are you gonna pay for that?
Right.
So, I, I mean.
Right.
It, it's not rocket science, it's just like, here's how much it's gonna cost.
Right.
So can we get this and push it out so people, I think, will see what we're dealing with?
It's on the Solid Waste website right now.
Okay.
So you go to murfreesboroTN.gov backslash solid waste, Tara Green helped, uh, we said, when we give this, when we give this message today to the council, we want it to be available to the public immediately. So the FAQ and the, and, and I've worked with Mike, uh, there's a YouTube video that we've, he's already interviewed me, we've already talked about Middle Point. I think you're gonna, you're, you're doing a press release and we're doing a, uh, we're gonna have a YouTube video that, that, where I, in five minutes, say what I've taken way too long ago.
And, and I guess we ought to say thank you to Larry Flowers and Scott Rosen and the people here who are trying to carry this message out to the public because public education is going to be the key to making this a successful presentation because, I mean, if you ride around the county right now, every place you see a TV in a ditch, you're probably gonna see a TV with a half truckload of trash laying next to you in the ditch. So I mean, we.
And, and, and Will.
If you're old as me, you can remember the Tennessee trash commercials of the Four Berry riding down the street and they're throwing trash out of it as they go down the road. I mean, that, that's the way you get rid of your trash if you don't have an organized operation and, and currently we've got one.
Right.
But we need to continue to have one. And, you know, no, this isn't nearly as sexy as the airport presentation that you're giving.
I know.
But, but.
I expect a lot of people to join my fan club after this presentation.
But, but it is the harsh reality of life that is, is handed to us right now and we need to deal with it.
Right.
And, and the better we can educate the, the public on it and, uh, of what the situation is, I mean, a ton of work went into this and you did a phenomenal job and I thank you, but.
I may get another front page article on this one.
That's what he, that's what he's going to.
Thank you. It was, it was a lot, a lot, I, it was a lot of collaboration and a lot of learning, a lot, a lot of input, so thank you. And I, and I, I don't like getting up here for 35 minutes trying to discuss, but this is a big enough issue that I felt like it warranted the time because it's, it, it really is the biggest environmental challenge we have, uh, coming up.
And I wanna say, and there's several county commissioners who are here and, um, Mike who's here, Mimi, um, we're committed as a council and a city to work in, with the county and, and making sure that whatever we need to do to get something situated overall, we're, we're there to help do that. And, and I think, um, you know, it's gonna take a group effort to get it, to get it done and we've, we've gotta figure something out sooner than, than later. Cause you start looking at transfer stations and how most construction projects go, I mean, you're, you're probably two years on by the time you acquire land, engineering, I mean, you're two years, all of a sudden that five years goes to three and that's if we started today.
Right, that's right. And I will say the outreach needs to even double or triple when we start talking about recycling. That's gonna be a big.
I agree, I agree. All right, do we have any more questions for Darren? Craig, we have any other business?
I don't. Does anybody else have any other business?
Sooner or later, I'll bring back up, might as well get some of this stuff out on the table. Talked a little bit about, uh, I know I've seen it in some other municipalities, um, council, but you know, my, my whole thing is looking at future councils and mayors pay for Murfreesboro. So, you know, we need y'all to be putting some thought into what you think those numbers ought to look like. I mean, I, I don't have a magic number or anything, but we talked about it six months ago and kinda let it, let it sit and we probably ought to bring that on up. I think, you know, like I said, some municipalities around us have just done that. We probably ought to do it. I think I, I, I got Craig to look it up. It's been 25 years. I mean, 25 years is, is where we're going on the same number. You know, kinda one of the things that's brought it to mind, you know, I'm, uh, just even stuff as simple as just data on your phone and, you know, stuff like that that there are costs that go along with us doing this job. I'd never do it for myself and I don't think we can. So, I mean, the point is not certainly that any of us would be talking about voting our own selves a raise, that won't happen. We literally can't do that. So, you know, thinking about future councils though and, and, and thinking about, you know, 10 years and all that kinda stuff and trying to attract the right kinda people to do this in the future, you know, money's not everything, but it's something. So something we ought to consider, okay? So if you guys put a little bit of thought into that, I think we ought to probably address that sometime pretty soon.
Craig, I hadn't really thought about this, but maybe when budget comes around, we may need to look at how long that it's been since a mileage allowance, that, that mileage has been looked at. And I had never thought about, you know, I see every council member, you know, we use our own, our own, you know.
Right.
So it'd be, it may would be nice to look at how, you know, at least that there's some reimbursables or something.
Right, and we can take a look at those and this, this cell phone issue we can address and I'll talk to each one of you about that, but that's something we can address right off the bat.
Okay.
And, and I, and I hope it's always the case that people get into public service for public service, but at the same time, we are very fortunate today to have a mayor that serves and does as much time and as much effort as he puts into being the mayor of this city for no more than he's compensated financially is almost embarrassing. And, and so I, 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 I think that we're fortunate to have what we have, but at the same time, I, I feel sorry for the person who follows him because it, uh, for, for what we're compensating him today, it's, it's, it's almost embarrassing as a city.
I mean, at the end of the day, it's a 30 or 40 or more hour a week job, the, you know, the mayor and ours is not five hours a week certainly, you know, I mean, so I, the mayor really was kinda my inspiration to doing this, honestly, not, not, it wasn't his idea, but just the amount of work I see him put into it is, is enough to make me understand that that cannot be the way that this is. I mean, there are municipalities, municipalities right next door to us that are, you know, a third of our size and the mayor's paid more. And so I agree that it's certainly not something anybody, any of us want anybody doing for money, but we, we also shouldn't be putting people in a position to lose money doing it, to do it either. So anyway, just.
Yeah.
You guys be, uh, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm not talking about a hundred bucks either. My, is just to give you guys an idea of what I'm, I'm not thinking add a hundred bucks to the deal. I mean, it needs to be 25 years and either we have a cost of living, you know, figure out some sort of cost of living rationale or whatever, but it's going to be noticeable, it would be my opinion, so.
Yeah, we, that's something, I went to the National League of Cities and talked to people, you know, all over the United States and cities much smaller than us, and you'd be surprised if it was just, when they asked, what do we pay, I'd have to kind of tell a tale or two, because it was embarrassing, because, you know, Murfreesboro's on the map everywhere. And I agree, the time our mayor puts in and have a full-time job, three kids, I, I agree with that. And I also like, while we are looking at that, if, let's look at what we all make and increase everybody, not compared to what we're going to give, but just because I personally, I put in a lot of time myself, especially when issues come up. So, I say when we look, definitely our mayor, we need to
My understanding of it is, it's going to take, it's going to likely take us going to the legislature
Yeah.
to get a charter change. And even at that point, it's, nothing will take effect until after the next election.
Right.
So, and, and it, after even, anybody who votes in here after their election. So, you know, I can't change mine, my seat can change, but not until three years and 10 months from now. You know, so, we will, in no case, none of us will be voting on our own raises
Right.
unless the people have voted for that.
What about the gas, go, that route, right, the mileage or something?
Uh, the reimbursement for, for car expense, the car allowance as such?
Yeah, maybe put something to the air force about that, you know, that you can give us, I mean, that's another thing, we get that car, well, car allowance, and since I think that's been a couple dozen years that
Yeah.
that, you know, the mileage cost back then was probably 60% less or whatever, so
Yeah, it was 50% or more or less for the reimbursables, yeah.
All right.
And while we're talking about money, the, I know that a couple of months ago, I guess it was, I brought up the potential of trying to help the seniors who are on fixed incomes, who are retired employees from the city, evaluate whether or not there was any potential of giving them any raise whatsoever. And talked with Melissa Wright prior to the meeting today, and Melissa, rather than me convey it, it might be helpful for you to just to tell us where we're at in that process.
The HR director, as well as the city manager, has been working with our actuary to come up with some COLA, COLA studies for four different levels based on time of retirement. And I believe yesterday Craig asked for the number of employees in each of those categories so he could have that to review and, and that, as far as I know, that's where we are with that. I think the study is, is ready for, maybe for review, and that's why Craig asked some more questions.
Yeah, and, and I think the important thing is, we're not reviewing it for somebody who retired last week or last month or even last year, but if you've got somebody who retired, let's say 98 or sooner, go back 20 years, that the cost of living has increased so significantly that their fixed income, if we can do anything percentage-wise, even a small incremental percentage, I know that a senior would, would appreciate it. And so, I think that, you know, I, I appreciate what you've gotten done so far and I encourage us to continue down this road.
We'll, we'll continue down.